Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the County School Board of Frederick County to order. Today is September 24th and the time is 6:10 PM Eastern. We have an agenda before us. How would the board like to proceed?
Madam Chair, I move that the County School Board of Frederick County, Virginia, enter a closed session meeting for the following. One, to review-
Hold on, hold on, I'm sorry.
Just the agenda.
So this is just approval of the agenda and then you have to vote in Darrell into the meeting, sorry.
I'm sorry. We have an agenda before us. Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. Dr. Erskine, I understand you have some words for us.
Yes ma'am. I'd like to move that we bring in Mr. Bell, who's requested to participate in the meeting remotely for a personal matter specifically due to a family commitment out of state.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the table that's been properly seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none opposed? Motion passes. Welcome, Mr. Bell.
Thank you.
And Mr. Atkins?
Madam Chair, I move that the County School Board of Frederick County, Virginia, enter a closed session meeting for the following. One, to review and discuss appointments, administrative appointments, administrative leave, dismissals, resignations, information only substitute tutors, and volunteer pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1. And two, to review and discuss individual student matters that would involve specific students and particular information contained in their scholastic record, including requests for release from compulsory attendance for religious reasons pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A2. And four, consultation with legal counsel regarding school board policies relating to classroom decor, employee code of conduct, and public comment during board meetings pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A8. I so move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion going to closed session that's been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We are now in closed session. Mr. Atkins, I understand you have some words for us.
Madam Vice Chair, I move that we return from closed session.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor that's been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of returning from closed session, please respond by saying aye. And actually, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Sure. Dr. Erskine?
Aye.
Mr. Funas?
Aye.
Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Mr. Bell?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Motion passes. And Mr. Atkins?
All right. Madam Chair, I move to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed in the closed session, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board.
And we have a motion on the table?
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Second.
All right, seeing no discussion, we have a motion on the table to certify the results of closed session. May I have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Dr. Erskine?
Aye.
Mr. Funas?
Aye.
Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Mr. Bell?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. We are now back in open session. And Mr. Chair, do we- or a question, Mr. Atkins, do you have some motions for us out of closed session?
Madam Chair, we have a few that are coming out of closed session, a few motions coming out of closed session. I move that the board approve the personal actions recommended by the superintendent. I move-
Second.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion on the table. Any discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Seeing none opposed, motion passes.
Next, I move to approve the release of students A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, and O from compulsory attendance.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the table that's been seconded. Any discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, thank you, Mr. Atkins. All right, I'd like you to join me, please, in a moment of silence in honor of one of our students who has recently passed away. I now ask that everyone who is able to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and tonight we will have one of our students and award recipients lead us in the pledge, so if I could please have Nathan Zivik come up front, please. Thank you, Nathan.
Can I start?
Yes, sir, you may.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you, Nathan.
I don't know if he stood up.
All right, next we have a consent agenda before us. What is the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. It's been seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. We have an agenda. So this is the point in our meeting that we come to for my favorite point, which is our student-staff recognition. So Dr. Hammer, I'll turn it over to you and your team to do so.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good evening and welcome, everyone, to our Awards of Excellence program. Before we proceed, I would like to ask that everyone stay here through the entire program out of respect for each individual who is being recognized this evening. Once we have completed all of the presentations, you will have the opportunity to leave and enjoy the rest of your evening. In addition, when you come forward for your certificate or to be acknowledged as a school, please take a moment to pause with myself and Mrs. Klein for a photograph, then move to the right, remain at the front, and we'll take a group photo. So I'd now like to call down Madam Chair and myself as we go through the awards. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to invite Bass Hoover Elementary School Principal Darren Thomas and Assistant Principal Heather Hess forward, along with former Bass Hoover Elementary student Nathan Zivik, and volunteers Joe Burton and Becca White. They are being recognized tonight for their participation in the American Heart Association Kids' Heart Challenge. I'd also like to now invite Gina Washington forward from the American Heart Association. She is here this evening to make a special presentation to Bass Hoover Elementary School for their participation in the Kids' Heart Challenge. in the 98th State FFA Convention at Virginia Tech held in June. Future Farmers of America, FFA, is an intercurricular student organization for those interested in agriculture and leadership. First off, from Frederick County Middle School, Small Animal Care Career Development Event, the third-place team. We'll start off with Jade Godori with the third-place high individual. And Cameron Quirk. I don't think Cameron could make it tonight. So next off, we have the Quiz Bowl Event, the fifth-place team. And next up, we have the Quiz Bowl Event, fifth-place team, Emily Boswell. Next up, we have the Food and Fiber Career Development Event, the fourth-place team, Sasha Powell, also the seventh-place high individual. Next, we have the Junior Horse Hippology Career Development Event, second-place team, Emily Boswell, also the fourth-place high individual. Next is the Junior Prepared Public Speaking Leadership Development Event, Riley Surphus, the second-place high individual. Next, from Robert E. Ailer Middle School, we have the Agroscience Mechanics Contest, third-place team, Alex Must, also the second-place high individual. Next up, the Food and Fiber Contest, third-place team, Aiden Salvetti, also the eighth-place Next up is the Plant Science Contest, first-place team, Morgan Scruggs, the fourth-place high Next up is the Small Companion Animal Contest, fourth-place team, Elena Borman, also the Next, we have the Quiz Bowl Contest, Written and Oral Rounds, second-place team, Ella And for the Quiz Bowl Essay Contest, come on back down, Ella Docdolero, first-place The Junior Mechanics Contest, first-place team, Ryan Walco. Niaja Patton participated in the FBLA National Leadership Conference earlier this summer. Niaja placed second in the nation for the Digital Citizenship Objective Test. She participated in the conference for all three years while a student at Robert E. Ailer Middle School. Niaja is now a freshman at Shurando High School. And next up, we have the Apple Award. The Apple Award is given to a teacher who achieves something which significantly contributes to their school and community, uses creative or innovative instructional techniques, or goes above and beyond for the student. Tonight, we have one Apple Award recipient. Cassie Bell was nominated by a parent and is a teacher at Bass Hoover Elementary School. The parent who nominated her says, "My son is an AB honor roll student who thrives for structure and loves learning. Our fourth grade year was not the best, and he would come home in tears begging me to pull him out of school and homeschool him. He asked me every day to please pick him up early and asked several times if he could just stay home. We counted the days for summer break just so we could take a breath and not have the anxiety we were having. My son lost his confidence and love of learning. To say the least, it was a very hard year. Before school started the following year, I got a chance to sit down with Ms. Bell and meet with her to let her know that my son is a perfectionist and thrives to make people happy. Ms. Bell was not only a great teacher to my son, but also got his love for learning back, knows his worth, and knows what a great kid he is. She has become someone I trust with my child, knowing she sees what I see in him." And next, we have the Inspiration Award. The Inspiration Award is given to a staff member who did something inspirational for the student, staff, parents, or community as a whole. And the recipient of the inspiration tonight is Mr. Frank Page, Student Support Specialist. Mr. Page was nominated by a staff member who said he is a great asset to Frederick County Public Schools. He goes above and beyond to create relationships with students who he may not even work with as well as their families. He is calm, laid back, and very personable. These characteristics allow him to make connections and become a trusted adult to our students and their families. Mr. Page is always willing to lend a helping hand and balances the demands of the many schools he works with. And we have one more recognition tonight. We are thrilled to recognize the outstanding performance of our school bookkeepers tonight, who demonstrated exceptional diligence and accuracy in managing the student activity funds resulting in zero audit findings. Having no findings in an audit is a significant achievement. It indicates that the financial records are not only accurate, but also compliant with all relevant regulations and standards. This level of excellence is only possible through the hard work and dedication of the bookkeepers who prepare and maintain these records. This remarkable achievement reflects their devotion, meticulous attention to detail, and unwavering commitment to managing- I'm sorry, maintaining the highest standards of financial integrity in our schools. We also extend our heartfelt gratitude to our finance team for their invaluable support and guidance provided to the bookkeepers throughout the year. Their expertise and assistance were instrumental in ensuring our bookkeepers had the resources and knowledge necessary to excel in their roles. This collaboration between the school bookkeepers and the finance team exemplifies the power of teamwork and mutual support in achieving excellence. Congratulations to all of our bookkeepers for their exemplary performance, and a big thank you to the finance team for their continued dedication and support. Your hard work and commitment are truly appreciated and play a crucial role in the success of Frederick County Public Schools. Congratulations.
All right, thank you very much. And Dr. Hammer, I'll turn it back over to you. I understand you have one appointment for us.
I do, Madam Chair. Thank you very much. It is my distinct honor to announce that we have a new assistant principal at Evendale, Mrs. Morgan Kipley, if you don't mind coming on down, please. Ms. Morgan Kipley. Let's give her a round of applause, please. So Ms. Kipley comes to us from Grafton Integrated Health Network, where she has served as principal since 2022. Prior to her principalship, she served as a teacher in both general, special education, and substitute roles since 2012. Ms. Kipley holds an associate's degree in early childhood education from Manor College, a bachelor's in arts and sciences, dual degree in psychology, and childhood education from Rutgers University, a master's in education from Rosemont College, and an educational specialist degree in leadership and supervision from Liberty University. Please join me in giving her another round of applause and welcome.
I just wanted to thank you, Dr. Hammer, and the board for giving me this opportunity. I look forward to meeting the staff, the parents, and the kiddos over at Evendale and making connections with them. So thank you, guys.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And that concludes our administrative appointments and awards. I know many of you would love to hang out with us all evening, however, I do realize you have other commitments. So we'll take a brief moment and allow you to head back home and continue on with your evening. Thank you again for joining us.
We're staying.
All right. It looks like most folks have had an opportunity to be settled. And next up is Citizen Comments. The Frederick County School Board is pleased to receive public comments at each monthly meeting from members of the public, which include residents of Frederick County, Virginia, including residents of Winchester City, Virginia, Frederick County Public Schools students, parents, and legal guardians of Frederick County Public Schools students, Frederick County Public Schools employees, and businesses located within Frederick County, Virginia. Individuals speaking to the board will be allotted three minutes. Those individuals representing groups or organizations will be allotted five minutes with one representative per group. Upon recognition by the chair, a speaker should approach the podium to speak to the school board. Speakers are expected to show appropriate courtesy to the school board, and the school board is committed to showing respect and courtesy to all citizens. Comments that are not protected under the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution will not be tolerated. This includes comments that are vulgar, obscene, threatening, and comments that are intended to incite violence or other breaches of the peace. Members of the audience are not permitted to interrupt the speaker or meeting by asking questions or making comments. Violation of the guidelines will result in the chair ruling the speaker out of order. Continued violation will result in removal from the premises. The chair has discretion concerning public participation at school board meetings. School board meetings are tape recorded for the purpose of clarification and the development of the official minutes. And it looks like we have three individuals signed up. Do we have Ms. Danielle Johnson? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, please.
Good evening, everyone. So my question is, do teachers employed at schools specifically with special needs and disabilities get specific training? That's my question. And if so, what kind of training do the teachers get? And for me specifically, I'm asking because my daughter attends an REP.
So, we're not allowed to intergauge, but I do have, we will make sure that we circle back. Dr. Hummer, can you please?
Yes, ma'am. We will follow up and have a conversation.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Absolutely. And next up, we have Mr.
Good evening, Board. I'm a part of this, I'm not going to say tonight because the chairman is not here. But my next question is, you said that this is videotaped and recorded. This is a taxpayer-funded facility. This is a taxpayer-funded meeting. Why are the meetings being edited? I know last month, a board meeting was edited. The very beginning of it was edited. I believe Dr. Hummer knows why it was edited. Who gave the order to edit it? I called the media department, waited two weeks. Somebody finally returned my call, pushed me off onto somebody else, played phone tag, never got an answer. This is public record. It shouldn't be edited. Do you, well, I'm not going to ask you the question, but I believe you remember the reason why it was edited. And if you want to know, it was because I was called, that's my boy, as I was walking in the room, by the chairman. Comment I don't appreciate. A comment, a word I learned in high school myself, not to call anyone a boy. I was in high school gym class playing flag football. In the heat of playing flag football, the ball was put at the wrong spot, and I'm looking down. I said, "Nuh-uh, boy, the ball's back here." My gym teacher, two ninth graders, tells me to go stand on the sideline. What did I do? I didn't realize I did anything wrong, but I was a ninth grader. I get back in gym class, I get two of the hardest licks I ever had in my life, and I never forgot that lesson. I don't appreciate it. The next one, I meant to make this comment last month. When y'all voted for the 4th high school, the members that voted for it said they knew it was a lot of money, and they also knew that there was fluff in the money. So, and you would be good stewards, go back and watch your tape. I watched it prior to tonight to make sure I didn't misrepresent myself up here. Go back and watch your tape from July. Y'all admitted to there being a large number, there was fluff in the number, and y'all would be good stewards of taxpayers' money. To me, that's corrupt. You don't go ask for close to $200 million and know that there's fluff in it to build a school or to add on to schools or whatever. You come up with the real number, and that's the real number to build the school. An architect designs it, he comes out with the building list, and then they get a material cost and labor cost, and that's your cost to build something. Not, well, this is how we might want to have the school look. Nobody knows what the new school's going to look like yet, do they? But it's been passed up to the board of supervisors to fund it. And I believe that's all my questions for tonight. Thank you, Board.
And next up, we have Ms.
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Hummer. I kind of have a jumble of thoughts in my head, and I've tried to write stuff, but I come before you again to speak about the 119P policy that's going to go through the first reading this evening. I'm pretty much a freedom-loving person, and I think that we can all put our big boy and big girl pants on and take a little criticism, regardless of what's said. And I think that when you limit comment from the public, whether it be on social media sites or here in this building, that you sometimes are limiting some legitimate concerns that are coming from not just the parents of your students, but also from taxpayers who fund the schools. And so, I understand, I don't like everything everybody says about me, but I think when you've wasted a lot of energy and time, not to mention resources, trying to tweak this public participation policy, maybe because of some hurt feelings, I think that you wasted a lot of the taxpayers' dollars, and maybe we just need to revisit some of that. Thank you.
So that is the conclusion of the folks who did sign up to speak. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Thank you very much, members of the board. My name is Brian Nury, resident of the Opeckin District. Tonight, this board will vote to approve a resolution proclaiming October as Bullying Prevention Month. Bullying isn't what it was back in the day. It used to be back when a kid was bullied. It was localized to your immediate classes or the students in school. And sometimes, all it took was to punch the bully in the jaw to end the harassment. Those days are gone. However, in the days of social media and group chats, the problem of bullying is magnified exponentially. Before long, thousands of people across the nation or world can come crashing down on a kid. According to StompOutBullying.org, the aggregated results show that bullying can cause victims to experience fear, depression, loneliness, anxiety, low self-esteem, physical illness, and suicidal thoughts. While SCPS has a bullying prevention program in place, we're hearing too often that the policy is not being enforced. If this is true, then bullying prevention needs to be a priority. And we can see where bullying starts with some of the local cyberbullies right behind me. Children aren't inherently hateful. It's a learned behavior. Certain people have made it a personality trait to harass those they don't like. Holding signs harassing others, making baseless accusations, attracting social media harassment of a teacher, and even threatening to air the dirty laundry of two board members? That sounds pretty close to extortion to me. That being said, I don't think that the amendments to Policy 119P are the answer to the problem like that, and I believe that it invites more issues than from the people who seek to destroy than to solve the problems. Guideline 5, I think, is the most problematic section of this policy. If participants bring signs and they are confiscated, those signs become the responsibility of SCPS, requiring them to be safeguarded from damage. If the participants are told to return the signs to their vehicles, this could be interpreted as undue burden to walk back to the parking lot and back, as well as potentially preventing participation in the hearing. Additionally, as we have seen at a work session, someone could take a cheap t-shirt and scrawl obscene messages on them, and no one wants to see her strip that off in compliance to this new policy. No one. Under Virginia Code Title 2.2, Section 3707, quote, "All meetings of public bodies shall be open." However, under subsection B.2, state public bodies may allow access electronically, i.e. via video or audio recordings. 20 jurisdictions in Virginia do not put speakers on camera during public comment, including Clark and the city of Harrisonburg. 27 counties in Virginia don't even film their school board meetings. Neither of these violate state or federal laws. The meetings are still open, and citizens may participate. Therefore, I repeat my proposition to turn off the cameras during citizen comments. It's not invasive. It applies to all speakers equally, and more importantly, it'll cut down on the performances that have not only interfered with this board, but boards across the country and the state. It's online clout chasing, seeking fodder for social media attention by causing a spectacle, even posting, quote, "Just trying to get a little camera time." Board meetings are the time to get things done, like this 4th high school. It's time we get to it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment?
I wrote that speech for him. I just want to make that clear. My name is Brian Nury from the Opeckin District. I just want to say that we really need to enforce Robert's rule, but we just need a chair that has the balls to use as gavel. Really sorry to hear about Sturtivan getting taken away in an ambulance. That's very sad news. But seriously, this year has been one for the books. You have proposed a ridiculous budget for a 4th high school. Gay pride flags in classrooms. You hired a transgender mental person to teach second-grade students at Apple Pyridge Elementary School. You prevent kids from using the bathroom by paying for gates to lock up those doors. You approved minutes from a meeting with a board member that already left the board. That's embarrassing. You've hidden comments on your Facebook pages. The chairman allows perverts to assault women in this board meeting, and you guys don't do anything about it. You re-upload redacted school board meetings to YouTube to cover the chairman's slip-ups. You've got two idiot SROs who don't even know what their jurisdiction is. And now you're bringing forth a policy to restrict the criticisms from the people who wish to speak here publicly at these meetings. I just want to say what my lesser half just had to say. Yeah, you can turn off the video. What stops me from putting a camera right there and just uploading it? It's not going to do anything. So, that's all I have to say. Stop being a bunch of retards, though. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? All right. Seeing no others, that concludes our citizen comments. And next up, we have several reports. We'll start with the finance report. Dr.
Madam Chair, we have soup reports and also the Bright Futures report.
Oh, gosh. Forgive me, Dr. Hummer. Didn't mean to miss you. So, next up is our soup report, followed by a report from Bright Futures.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. So I do have a couple items that I do want to share. First and foremost, I want to thank the board for recognizing School Lunch Week, National School Bus Week, as well as Bullying Prevention Month through the proclamations that you all approved through the consent agenda. We take bullying very, very seriously, and it is not a rite of passage for our young people. We have structures and supports in place to help prevent us from, or excuse me, to help prevent bullying and to encourage all students to say something if they see bullying taking place. Together, we can combat behavior such as this so that everyone feels safe at school. Additionally, we are also very appreciative of our school nutrition staff and bus staff. They are what keep our students and our staff safe, as well as feeding our students in an efficient manner. We are so thankful for all of our great nutrition and bus safety staff who take this responsibility very, very seriously. I also want to thank Mr. Logan Shepherd and Mrs. Penny Curry for their phenomenal leadership in taking the charge of each of these amazing departments, and their leadership is leading us in a positive direction for keeping our bus rides safe and for our students in providing them with a healthy and nutritious meal. Thank you for all you do, Mr. Shepherd and Mrs. Curry, and we appreciate all of you of our nutrition and bus staff for what they do for our staff and community. Lastly, Madam Chair, I do want to take this moment to address the rash of social media threats that have taken place over the last month. And these threats are not just happening here in Frederick County, but across the Commonwealth. School safety is our number-one priority, and we take all of these threats very seriously. We follow strict procedures in collaboration with our local sheriff's office to ensure that we uphold the safety of our students and our schools and our community. And there's a lot of resources that goes into these investigations when we work through these situations. We totally understand the inconvenience that these situations cause by the disruption of our schools and our community events, and we will hold each of these individuals accountable for these actions. Parents and guardians, we ask for your help. A lot of these social media threats originate outside of school, but have a direct impact on our school and our community. Please work with your child to understand the seriousness of sending out these posts, and please help us by monitoring what your child is putting out on social media. Please. I also want to thank our amazing team, our administrators, our staff, our local sheriff's office, our parents, and our students for their help in staying ahead of these threats. This is a collaborative effort, and together, we can continue to keep our students, staff, and community safe. So with that, Madam Chair, I want to hand it over to Ms. Elise Stein Dollar, who's going to share with us about Bright Futures. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Time for a little brightness for your evening. Many of you know me from Bright Futures, but I have the privilege of coordinating that program. I see a couple of new faces. But it is my privilege to funnel your donations to the students in our community that can benefit from the most. So that is, your gently-used running shoes are now on a child in PE class, or maybe you're turning your food drive into 1,500 food packs for our area students, or perhaps it's... it's even your garden produce coming into a new pop-up free produce stand. But more on that here in just a second. We are coming off of a landmark year at Bright Futures. Our last year was really one for the books. The year prior, we helped 700 kids with emergency basic needs being, not being met, not including our food pack numbers. This last year, we ended at over 1,200, just to give you an idea about the increased need in our community. And that was just with those emergency basic needs, things like when a child doesn't have a pair of shoes, when a child doesn't have, you know, the most basic need items to function in their classroom environment. Now, when you fast forward a little bit into the summer, because as we all know, hunger does not take the summer off, although I hope most of you are at the beach, we were out all over Frederick County and all in between, from Gore to Middletown, bringing the food to the kids that could benefit from them most. So a thought for you, when the food stops at school, where does lunch come from? Where does that free and reduced lunch happen for our students during the summer? Now, the answer is different for every family, but the challenge persists. Many of these children in our school system who rely on that free and reduced lunch or the 1,500 that rely on our food pack are going through some serious tough times during the summer. So we bring the answer to them. We were very pleased this year to have an incredible, an incredible year in being able to give back to more students than ever. It is a challenge, but we are here to meet it. We had 1,000 students that benefited in 2022. In 2023, 2,000, a number I thought we would never reach. And then this past summer, 2,600, a staggering amount of students that are needing our food when school is not in session. That is a huge amount of our population. And when you think about students going hungry, do you think they're learning? Do you think they're behaving? Do you think they're absorbing things? Do you think they have behavioral issues? I'm going to leave that in your court to think about. But one thing I do know is that when you have a kid with a full belly, everything looks a little bit brighter. Everything is moving in the direction you want. We did have one hiccup this summer, which broke my heart. It was the very last day, and it was 2:01. We had just closed and wrapped up. We were completely out of food. Everything was gone. There was nothing left for this mother who came in on two wheels to that parking lot right off her shift, and you could see her face drop when she saw my table. It was empty. There was no produce. There was no shelf-stable food, beans, rice, cereal, no plants. It was empty, and it broke my heart. She gave me her address, but I knew where to find more food. I knew we could find the answer. So we did. We came back, we circled up, we rallied our troops with an incredible amount of partners we have in our community. And believe it or not, she was only one mile from my doorstep on my way home. And the look on her little baby's faces when I dropped off those boxes, plural, is something I will never forget. And I want you to know that because of folks, folks like you and your support in our community, that people who may only live a mile from your doorstep are having a brighter future. You can see the relief in their faces when you have support like this available to your students. I want to thank so many folks for making your summer so incredible, from being able to give out hundreds of fresh plants to allow people to grow their own food. I remember there was one woman who told me every year she looks forward to that tomato plant because they eat from that tomato plant all summer long. And that's just incredible to me. And then, of course, CCAP and all the other partners we have in our community that allow us to bolster our offerings and give more and do more. We also dabbled with fresh produce this year, and I want to do a little nod to Dr. Hummer over here for planting that seed in my mind. We can always do more for our students, and we dabbled with fresh produce this year. And a casual five tons of produce were given out, out of our flaming van this summer, and which is a lot of cabbage and zucchini. And I still am slightly traumatized thinking about those 50-pound bags of cabbages, but an incredible feeling. Nothing like giving somebody a fresh pineapple when all they've ever received is canned. It is just such a blessing to be able to give this back to our students. As we move on, school's in session, how about that? But the need continues. So if you're thinking 1,500 kids that don't have food over the weekend, that may not eat over their weekend until they get back to school on Monday, do you think they're going to buy a loaf of bread, or do you think they're going to buy a binder and some comp books and some spirals? So what we do is we try to remove that barrier to learning. That means we find a way. And through our community partnerships, again, so many folks donating so much, from the nurse dropping off a backpack on her way to her shift at Valley Health, to, I mean, our folks at Martin's giving us cases of backpacks, and so many people that I could never name them all. I mean, it took a community this year, but we have raised an incredible amount of, of school supplies and have given back so much to so many. Our numbers are already set to surpass past, past years based on what we're seeing now. At the end of this last month, we had 350 students helped. Previously, in the, the last year, it was 250. To give you an idea of the scope of our need, just keeps growing, but the community's generosity also keeps growing. So, I mean, we're keeping up. It's a horrible challenge to be in, but we're, we're rising to meet it. Then, one last thing I want to touch on, I want to spotlight our new fresh produce initiative. Through partnership with some of the FFA kids that you saw here tonight, we have been bringing this fresh produce out to our students year-round, something we're really, really proud of, working with our FFA students to, once we, as Bright Futures, get the produce to the school, working with FFA to distribute it. We had our very first pop-up free farm stand this last, last week, actually, at Millbrook. And I'll never forget the look of several kids' faces when they ate a plum for the first time. They had never seen a plum, and they didn't know apples came in colors other than green. And, which is staggering to me in Winchester. But through this amazing generosity of our community members, we were able to give out more, I mean, let me think, it was about 1,000 pounds of produce to about 200 students in a five-minute mayhem of them, as they're loading the bus, grabbing bags of produce, giving out and sharing with their classmates. It was an incredible experience. And I also want to say a thank you to Dowell J. We had a teacher from Dowell J. who went and dug out two huge trash bags of potatoes that we were able to share and give out as well, which is just so cool. And this is an opportunity for anyone in our community to pillage their gardens, give us their offerings. Don't sneak that zucchini over to your neighbor's porch. Instead, give it to Bright Futures, but on our pop-up days, please. And we can share it with our community and our students and help each other lead healthier, better lives. I do want to leave you with one thing, and, but there's so many students and so much darkness in our lives, and we see it so often with our students. We see the, these horrible stories, we hear about these horrible things. I want to thank you all for allowing us to have a light bulb, because when you're covered in darkness, someone needs to be there to turn on the light for these kids. And I just want to thank you all in the school board for your continued support in making this possible and giving us a light switch for so many students. Thank you so much, guys. Appreciate you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick question, Ms. Dolanar, as far as like the how to donate. So I wrote down here, we had zucchini coming out of everywhere at my home this summer.
So. I'm so sorry to hear that.
I know. So where, where can we donate? Like, to, for folks that are listening, how do we donate? Is there any, I mean, coming from personal gardens, is there any kind of regulations?
So because Bright Futures is, we are special with the way people can donate. They can donate as-is from your gardens, from, our produce can come from everywhere, and it can be donated as-is. And with FFA, we're able to merchandise it, which I'm, I leave those professionals to that job. But we can take anything from anyone's gardens. And if you look at our pop-up dates, we have times where people can bring and drop off items before the giveaway. And we rely heavily on those FFA students and our partners in Ag, and even here at the school board to facilitate that entire process and make it perfect for our students to take home and move on with.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Is there any other questions?
All right. And Darrell, Mr. Bell, do you have any questions for Ms. Dolanar? Is Darrell still with us? Maybe?
I'm here. I'm sorry. Yes, no, I don't have any questions, but it sounds wonderful.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. All right, now we are on to unfinished business, and Dr. Hummer, I'll turn it back over to you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So up for a first reading is 119P, and there are currently two items that, that has been proposed to add to this, which is the, the conduct of individuals who are coming up to speak, which is there in front of you, as well as the removal of signs. And that's up for discussion. This is a first reading, so those changes and adjustments can be made. So I'll hand it over to the board for discussion.
Excellent.
If I may, I wanted to address, just start us off and address one of the comments from Ms. Stottlemyer. One thing that I did notice in this, and if I am missing something, please do, do let me know, but there is nothing in this current policy and draft form that would restrict someone from coming up and getting onto one of us board members. So there is nothing to that effect. What, what we do have in there, it has to do with certain language being used, profanity would be specific. But that, just wanted to address that. I think that was a change since when it was initially posted back during the work session that we initially took a look and we subsequently tabled. So just want to address that. So, um, anyone else?
Madam Chair?
Yep.
So I've talked with my fellow board members, people out in the public. I am 100% against this policy, changing of it. We already have the power of the gavel. We can already gavel stuff down. As Mr. Nury brought up, we have Robert's Rules, where we can conduct business. One of the things that we talked about was, is the board able to conduct business for the SCPS with distractions? I think we got business done when we had distractions. As far as social media comments, I disagree with us turning off the social media comments. I've talked with the superintendent and other board members about this. For me, it's good to see emails come in, and I respond to just about every one of them. Or I'll answer phone calls or whatever, but it's good to, like, go through those social media posts and see what people actually have to say. To me, it's a public forum where I can go out there, I can read the temperature of the room. I understand not everything is, is sunshine and rainbows in there, and it's, it's pretty nasty sometimes in there. But, you know, people have legitimate concerns about the school or how we're conducting business. I like to go in there and see that stuff. That way, I can make an informed decision when it comes to this board. As far as my personal feelings on this, I think it's another step in governmental overreach. You know, we already have a lot of government overreach that we see every day. I'm going to leave everybody with a couple RFK quotes. I promise they're short. It's, "All power taken from the people will never be returned voluntarily. A power taken from the people will be abused," let me emphasize that, "will be abused by the government to maximize the extent, to the maximum extent possible. Nobody ever complied their way out of totalitarianism. The only thing we can do is resist." Thank you.
Madam Chair. Madam Chair. I just want to add a, a couple of comments about the policy. I find myself, while not in lockstep, still in very strong agreement with Mr. Atkins for a couple of different reasons. The first, I want to address one of the comments that, and I'm sorry, I cannot remember the speaker's name. I asked the same question about why YouTube, why videos of our meetings are edited before they went onto YouTube, and I'll, I'll admit, I was ignorant, and so I was really asking because I don't know. And I was given a really great explanation. We were cited as a school division by YouTube on our account because we were putting up raw video, and some of the vulgarity and profanity and nastiness, we were reported for violating YouTube's Terms and Services. And so when I asked that question, why are we editing things, that was the answer I was given, because we were flagged as an inappropriate display of content. I have my own feelings on that, especially because most of us are adults, but I, I do want to add one other piece. When I took this job, and I don't want to speak for my peers, but I, I feel like I probably can have this in common with everybody here. This is part of the job, and anybody paying taxes in this community has the right to come up and redress a grievance with this board. And if you, it, look, if the, some of the pictures tonight of the FFA kids got ruined and you want to fuss at me because there was a glare off my bald head, I need to take that. And I'll sit here and take that because that's my job. The, the one thing I would just ask the public to think about, and it's something I'm still mulling over in my own head. When I was 17, I was very angry with this board. It was the year that Millbrook opened, and the board at the time made a boneheaded decision that was way out of step with the rest of our peers and forced kids to go over to Millbrook instead of letting senior classes stay at James Wood and Sherrando. To make a long story short, I showed up to a public hearing at the age of 17 and told them exactly what I thought. And I haven't changed my mind in case any of them are wondering and watching tonight. But I would ask us to keep in mind those young people. We have a responsibility to teach them what civil governance looks like. And I worry sometimes that we forget that they really are paying attention. This past week, I got an email, and I'm not going to name the person, but I want to, I want to brag on them. I got an email from a student at Millbrook. I get a lot of great emails, but very rarely does it come from a kid. And this student really inspired me, for no other reason than because they did exactly what as a, as a civics teacher, Mr. Bell and I are teaching kids to do, which is participate responsibly in government as a good young person, ask questions, and expect answers. They weren't, they weren't nasty or profane. They were respectful. And if that's what the future looks like, is this young man from Millbrook, then I feel good about where we're going. So I, so I do share those reservations that you voiced about the policy and just wanted to express that to the folks out there tonight.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Mr. Bell, please.
Yes, hi, everybody. Sorry I'm not there. I'm actually celebrating my 20th anniversary with my wife talking to you, so take that as you will. I think it's important that the decorum and dignity of our body is upheld at all times. Our image in the public mind should be one where proceedings, debates, discussions, things that are said to us, by us, take place with a view to resolve the issues through a constructive and cooperative approach. Do I want to limit someone's ability to speak freely in these meetings? Absolutely not. But do I want someone to show respect, decorum, and dignity for themselves as well as for this body? Absolutely. Wearing outfits that have epithets on them or profanity on them, holding signs of the same, if you want to bring a sign in, great, bring a sign in. But have, have respect for yourself, have respect for this body. You know, if you disagree with something, that's fine. If you want to call me a son of a, then call me a son of a, but do it in a, do it outside of this body. We have students that are watching it, we have teachers that are watching it, and the teachers that we have in our division work hard every single day. The last thing they need to hear is that their administrator is a bad word, or, and if you feel that way, that's great, feel that way. And I certainly don't want to put a staunch on that, but I don't believe that this is the place to do that. If you want to put it on your social media, put it on your social media. If you want to record these sessions on your social media, do so. I'm not trying to disallow anyone to speak their mind or speak freely about anything they want to speak about. As far as this policy is concerned, honestly, I think we're, we're, we're getting too deep in the weeds with it. I think we need to figure out what it is that we're going to do and stick to it and move on. And I certainly hope that we have dignity, decorum, and respect in mind when we come to a decision on this policy. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bell.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
We have an opportunity as a board to be a conduit for the public. They have a right to voice their opinion and to let us know how they feel, and we have to carry the ball from there. We have a certain format. I don't think that we have gone overboard. People are growing into the ability to speak to us and relay how they feel. I think that we'll grow into it, and they will also understand that there's decorum that is needed, and we can get the job done if we work together.
You want me to say something?
You don't have to, no, ma'am. It's just your option. Up to you.
Well, I think what, the policy that we already have is probably sufficient. There may need to be some clarification on one or may need to be some clarification on one or two items, a little bit more detail, but we can't stop people from saying what they want to say. Our only concern is that when people come here to speak, is that they do use the wisdom to speak their mind in a way that puts forth the most, what I want to say, dynamic volume to show us what they mean and show the public what they mean without being crass. And in that, in that manner also, we have to consider, I do, not only are you speaking to other individuals here, but you're speaking to the whole world, and you're speaking to your children. So, please keep that in mind at all times, but please do say what you feel and what you mean. We want to hear from you. We don't want your children just to come here and just be puppets to us. We want you to be involved, and that means that you need to speak up and come and tell us how you feel, and share these things.
Well said, Linda, very well said.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, seeing no other comments, we will move on. So, this is the first reading. We will read it again on our October 23 meeting, and at that point we will vote. All right. Next up is new business, and first up is the Finance Committee Meeting Minutes, or correction, Finance Committee Meeting Summary. So, Dr. Erskine, could you read that for us?
Of course. This is a long one, get ready. A meeting of the Finance Committee of the Frederick County School Board was held on August 28, 2024. Meeting was called to order at 4:32 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mrs. Anderson discussed the FY25 budget document, staff positions and salaries, contracted services, special education, full-time equivalents. She also reviewed the lease agreement between FCPs and NREP. Mrs. Chapman discussed the contract award for agency nursing and special education student services to the Stepping Stones Group LLC, and reviewed the FY24 athletic financial reports. Mrs. Seibert shared the FY24 year-end financial statements and the NREP operating and textbook funds, private purpose fund, consolidated services fund, and the health insurance reserve fund. Mrs. Chapman gave information on the school capital projects fund and the school construction fund. Mrs. Anderson reviewed the school debt service fund, the school textbook fund, and the special grants fund. She also discussed the school nutrition fund and the school operating fund and the remaining obligated funds.
For that speech for Emma.
Mrs. Camery and Mr. Davis reviewed the FY24 remaining unobligated funds. Mrs. Camery also discussed possible future fund requests, the opioid funds, and the George Mason University FCPs lab school partnership. Mrs. Camery also discussed that if the school board were to approve the three adjustments to the FY25 budget, the adjustments would not officially be authorized until approved by the Frederick County Board of Supervisors, and that meeting adjourned at 5:57 PM. Additional details regarding the information covered at the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Are there any questions from board members about information shared at the Finance Committee meeting held on August 28? Seeing none. Madam Chair, a few action items. I move that the board approve the request to create 12 new full-time equivalents representing positions in contracted services.
I second.
All right, we have a motion on the table. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion? All right. Seeing those, no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes.
I also move that the board approve the proposed lease between Frederick County Public Schools and Northwestern Regional Educational Programs, and to authorize the Chair of the School Board to execute the lease agreement in substantially the same form as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the table. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I move the board approve the contract award to the Stepping Stones Group LLC for agency nursing and special education student services in the amount of $2 million.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
All right, because this one is such a high amount, thank you, Mr. Atkins, we have a motion on the table, and it has been seconded. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Dr. Erskine?
Aye.
Mr. Funas?
Aye.
Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Mr. Bell?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, motion passes.
I move that the board approve a budget adjustment to the school operating fund for $172,878.70, which represents the obligated funds received during FY24 and requested for carry forward into FY25.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
I move that the board approve a budget adjustment to the capital projects fund, capital projects funds in the amount of $1,615,212, which represents the FY24 remaining unobligated funds from the school operating fund to be used to purchase one boiler for Shandau High School, the boiler and water heater at Bass Hoover Elementary School, track resurfacing at Shandau High School, tennis court resurfacing at Millbrook High School, and any funds remaining after these projects are completed will be used to fund the alternate project of windows and doors at Orchard View Elementary School.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion? All right, seeing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I move the board approve a request for a budget adjustment to the special grants fund in the amount of $798,809, which represents year-one funds allocated to FCPs from the George Mason University and Frederick County Public Schools Lab School Partnership.
Second.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And finally, I move that the board approve the minutes from the Finance Committee meeting held on August 28, 2024.
Second.
All right, motion on the table. It's been properly seconded to approve the minutes. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. That was a long Finance Committee meeting. You should talk to the Chair of that committee about that.
Really long.
All right, next up, we have the Personnel Committee meeting. Mr. Funas?
A meeting of the Personnel Committee of the Frederick County School Board was held on September 9, 2024. The meeting was called to order at 4:33 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Ms. Campbell gave a staffing update for professional vacancies and a breakdown of all vacancies. She also shared a staffing update FY25 and support, on support vacancies as of 8/29/24. Professional vacancies filled as of 8/29/24, years of experience of new hires and substitute vacancies. Ms. Regner reviewed the celebrations of recruitment efforts, including the Special Education Department chairs, interview process, the hiring platform, top school jobs, the decreased turnover rate, and community open house opportunities. She also gave a recruitment and retention update regarding recruiting plans and the focus on special education. Mrs. Jordan gave an intro to the proposed policy regarding classroom decor and flags, and Ms. Rickley discussed the intro into employee code of conduct and the next steps of the two proposed policies. The meeting adjourned at 5:20 PM. Additional details regarding the information covered at the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to the board members. Are there any questions from board members about information shared at the Personnel Committee meeting held September 9?
All right.
As there are no questions, I move the board approve the minutes for the Personnel Committee meeting held on September 9, 2024.
Second.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded to approve the Personnel Committee Meeting Minutes. Any discussion? All right, seeing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Funas. And next, we have the Instruction Committee meeting. Mr. Bell, would you like to read that, or would you like a designee?
Madam Chair, I was wondering if you would do me the solid of reading it for me.
I can certainly do that. Let me get it here in front of me. All right, I have it right here.
Thank you.
I will do my best, Mr. Bell impression. The Instruction Committee-
Be careful.
I know, I will, I will. The Instruction Committee report for September 9, 2024. A meeting of the Instruction Committee of the Frederick County School Board was held on September 9, 2024. The meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM, and a copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mrs. Knight discussed the strategic plan, including the what, the benefits of the strategic planning, the why, the how, and the strategic plan phases. Mrs. Heidengardner, did I get that correct?
Heidengardner.
Heidengardner, thank you. Mrs. Heidengardner reviewed the new staff orientation feedback. Dr. Myers gave an update to the grading coalition for elementary schools and secondary schools. She also reviewed the bell schedules for elementary and secondary schools for an optimization of the transportation of students. Mrs. Knight highlighted a few of the challenges and potential changes of the bell schedule. Mr. Shepherd discussed the optimization of bell time schedules and bus routes. Dr. Myers reviewed the Frederick County Public Schools FCPs Gifted Advisory Committee Annual Report. The meeting adjourned at 6:52 PM. Additional details regarding the information covered at the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Are there any questions from the board members about information shared at the Instruction Committee meeting held on September 9? All right, seeing no questions, we have one action, oh, Mr. Atkins, okay. Seeing no discussion, we have one action item. I move that the full board approve the minutes from the Instruction Committee meeting held on September 9 of 2024.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor. It has been seconded. Any discussion?
Well done, Madam Chair.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, next, we have Building and Grounds Committee meeting. Mr. Atkins. I almost called you Dr. Atkins.
Can't be that. A meeting of the Building and Grounds Committee of Frederick County Public Schools was held on September 23, 2024. The meeting was called to order at 4:30 PM. A copy of the minutes has been provided to each board member. During the meeting, Mr. Davis discussed the capital projects list highlights, including the fire alarm projects for the summer of 2024, notable summer 2024 projects, and recently funded 2024 projects. Mr. Kenny gave an update on the James Wood High School renovation and on the Dow J. Howard Center Data Science Lab and Diesel Lab. Mr. Bishop reported on the Warrior Drive Brandy Lane project. Dr. Goodwin discussed the Indian Hollow Open Space Maintenance Agreement. Mr. Conlon gave an update to the Weapons Detection System Pilot Program. Ms. Chapman explained the request for proposal, the RFP process, and presented the recommendation for a contract award to Merchants Grocery Co., Inc. for dry and frozen foods in the amount of $1,707,341.75. The meeting adjourned at 5:58 PM. Additional details regarding the committee meeting are included in the minutes provided to board members. Do board members have any questions about what was covered at the Building and Grounds Committee meeting held on September 23? All right, seeing none, I do have four action items. One, I move the board-
Oh, yes. Yep, Ms. Jordan?
If I may, the first item is in regards to the Indian Hollow Elementary School Open Space Maintenance Agreement. We do have an update for the board. Two points I would like to update. One, I was able to speak with a member of DEQ who clarified that the trail, the nature trail that is on that property would be able to maintain and remain, and we would be able to maintain it as long as Frederick County was okay with that. Because we are unique in that Frederick County oversees this program for DEQ. We did, I did get a chance to speak with the Director of Public Works, who oversees that program, and he confirmed that there is no issue with the trail remaining and us maintaining that. The other point, just want to clarify, because Dr. Erskine did make a comment in regards to perpetuity, they were able to clarify that as of right now, if the board were to approve the OSMA, which is the Open Space Maintenance Agreement, that could be undone if the school division was, or the school board was able to present a plan that clarified the management of, of upholding the runoff, water runoff quality, but it would have to be approved by Frederick County. The one thing I just wanted to clarify is, that is the practice as of right now, but if we fast forward a few years, regulations may change, and that's not always a guarantee. At the end of the day, at the end of the day, we also don't know how much the nutrient credits would cost in order to undo it, you know, further down the road. So, just wanted to make sure that the board was clear on that. As of right now, we could undo it as long as we have a management plan that's approved by the Frederick County overseeing the program, but it just, that could potentially change down the road. However, I do think based on the nature of the property itself, it's unlikely that we would move forward with anything, but wanted the board to be armed with all the information that we were able to get today.
So, Madam Chair, if I may, our recommendation does not change. We just want to make sure that you all are fully informed, because we did have to follow up with the DEQ, as we mentioned yesterday. We just want to make sure, as Mrs. Jordan eloquently just stated, we want to make sure you're fully informed, but our recommendation still does not change.
Excellent. And just for the public, and I know we talked about it during the Buildings and Grounds ad nauseam, but the trail that you speak of, Mrs. Jordan, that's the Charlie Marple Trail. So, that's, we wanted to make sure that whatever decision that we put forth to the board, that it encompassed preserving that trail.
Right.
So, thank you for digging into that.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Question on that, has the trail been renovated, or is it still in the original condition?
So, it, it's my understanding that that is, when Charlie Marple passed away, we decided to, this FCPs decided to put a trail in that area to remember him. So, that is fairly recent, but that trail did exist before, so it has been renovated.
That is correct. It was renovated before it was dedicated in Charlie's memory.
So, Frank, to be clear, the trail was originally built by the Boy Scouts back in the 90s. Pretty sure it's 90s, might have been 80s, but we renovate, or, actually, Deputy Nicely and some others, excuse me, renovated that trail after Charlie's passing to commemorate that. We just, during the Building and Grounds Committee meeting, we wanted to make sure we were good caretakers of that trail, and make sure that it did stay updated. Now, there are community partners that do assist with that, Trex being that partner, who's donated a lot of time and effort into that and material. So, I am comfortable with leaving that as an open space maintenance agreement, not only for the fact of preserving the trail, but it also does save the taxpayers $34,000 in nutrition credits, or nutrient credits as of now. As was stated by council, that can change if we ever wanted to expand that school or anything like that, but where Indian Hollow is and the lack of homes being built in that area, it is not foreseeable in the near future, or the distant future, really, that we would ever need to expand that trail. And the area that we're talking about is a steep bank. It would cost a lot of money to backfill, get your geotechnical in there, and actually make that viable to put a building on. So, it isn't conducive to pay those land credit, or those nutrient credits, and for the off chance that we would build on there.
Good, thank you.
All right, so I move that the board approve the open space maintenance agreement.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. If we could, just to clarify- Excuse me, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. If we could, just to clarify, um, if you could make a motion to amend, that motion to include authorize the chair to execute all necessary documents that are approved by legal counsel.
Okay. Move to, uh, I'd like, like to amend my motion. Well, we already have a, a motion and a second, so we need to vote that down, correct?
You'll give me one moment, um, because it speaks specifically in our-
I think we do. I think we do.
It's not gonna hurt to do that, so if you vote it down-
Let's go ahead and make it clean and do that.
That will be fine.
So, okay. Uh, we have a motion on the floor. It's been properly seconded. Um, bearing in mind, we do need to amend this motion, so, but we do have a motion on the floor. We can get a motion to amend the motion, or we can strike it down?
Strike it down.
Madam Chair, I make a, a motion to amend the motion.
So there's a motion to amend the motion, understand that it, there's a motion to amend the motion to enable the chair to sign proper documents in order to execute the O S M A? Is that it?
That are approved by legal counsel.
That are approved by legal counsel?
Yes.
So, there is-
Second.
Okay, so there's a motion to amend the motion on the floor, and that's been properly seconded. Any discussion?
No.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. So we have this other motion that's on the floor. It's the motion to, uh, actually, no, we should be good. All right.
We're good.
Learning as we go, thank you. Okay, Mr. Atkins.
Uh, next, uh, action item is I move that the board approve the expansion of the Weapons Detection, uh, units to Charando High School and Jameswood High School based upon the timeline provided.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
There are a couple of things that I just want to get on the record. Uh, a couple of these I said the other night at the, the Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting. So, so I want to extend that comment and also acknowledge some of the, um, really helpful feedback that I got, um, from staff members at a couple of these schools, um, as well as, um, as well as, uh, the F C E A. First, thank you to Mr. Conlon for the amazing work that his team did with Dr. Hummer and his staff keeping our kids safe. They literally rolled this out overnight, um, and I felt great about how, uh, that went, how quickly they improved it, um, and how much faster that process went, just within a matter of a couple of days. So thank you for that. Uh, also, thank you to Mr. Thompson and his staff over, uh, at Dow J. for the way that they supported in rolling that out and teaching staff members. Um, it was great to have that, especially kind of as a small case study, and I appreciate you guys for that very much. Um, the, the thing I want to get on the record to make sure that we're all aware is that, um, we ask staff to do a lot. We ask teachers to do a great deal, and, um, we ask them to fill in duties, all other duties as assigned, is a pretty standard form of contract in the Commonwealth. I want to make sure that this board continues to have meaningful conversations and take, um, take feedback from our staff members about what we first see staffing these metal detectors and these weapons detection systems looks like in the future, because I think that there is a, there's a value in a conversation about whether we ought to require somebody to do this, whether there should be an opt-out, they could take another duty instead, whether it's even appropriate to have, um, our teachers, um, teaching arithmetic and, um, you know, fifteen minutes before that, making sure a kid doesn't have a gun in their backpack. Um, I, I remain uncomfortable with that kind of carte blanche, um, conversation that we had the other night. So I just want to make sure that that, um, that's on the record and that those constituencies feel heard.
Thank you, Dr. Erskine. Any other discussion?
Uh, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Well, Dr. Erskine, you took the wind out of my sails. Uh, we're thanking everybody. Um, I, I know he didn't mean to, but he left out the SROs that, that actually came in there and, uh, and, you know, worked a lot, uh, Frederick County Sheriff's Office. Um, you know, thank you for all the work you guys did that night, uh, providing all kinds of surveillance out there, you try and track this kid down. Um, security in these schools are of the utmost importance, and we don't want any of our students, uh, to feel unsafe. Um, this is a, a work in progress. Um, there are going to be some hiccups along the way, but our team's piloted this, um, ironed out a lot of stuff, but keep in mind, each school's going to be a little bit different. Um, so with that being said, I look forward to, uh, rolling these out at Charando and Jameswood, um, and trickling it on down as funds become available, grants, dollars become available. Um, so thank you once again to all the staff that was involved in, uh, dealing with this emergency issue.
No, Mr. Bell, okay. All right. Any other-
Hello, sorry about that.
Did you hang up on me?
Never.
And, Mr. Bell, we were just wrapping up a discussion on the second motion, um, that has been properly seconded regarding the CHIA Weapons Detection System rollout to the remaining four, three high school, or correction, two high schools, Freudian Slip Fourth High School.
Thank you.
Um, any further discussion? No? All right, uh, seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes.
All righty, um, next, I move that the board approve the contract award to Merchants Grocery Co., Inc. for the dry and frozen foods in the amount of one million, seven hundred seven thousand dollars, three, seven hundred, sorry, let me get this right for the record, one million, seven hundred seven, um, three hundred forty one dollars and seventy five cents.
Second.
All right, there's a motion on the floor. It's been properly seconded. Any discussion? That is a lot of food and a lot of money. May I have a roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Dr. Erskine?
Aye.
Mr. Funas?
Aye.
Mr. Atkins?
Aye.
Mr. Bell?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, motion passes.
All right, finally, I move to the, I move the board approve the minutes of the Building and Grounds meeting held on September twenty third, two thousand twenty four.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor. It's been properly seconded to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All right, seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, we have another, uh, line item of new business, and I know I forgot something. I will circle back to that, Dr. Hummer, but I do have another line item of business. It's to move the twelve of November school board meeting to November nineteenth. So, uh, how would the board like to proceed?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Atkins.
I move that the, uh, school board move, uh, their meeting to November twelfth, or from November twelfth, twenty twenty four, to November nineteenth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor to move the meeting as stated, and it's been properly seconded. Any discussion?
Uh, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, can, can we explain to everyone why we want to do that?
Yes, absolutely. So the reason we are moving that meeting is we normally have our scheduled meetings, nor regular scheduled meetings on the third Tuesday of every month. Originally, um, the move to the twelfth of November was to accommodate a conference that we were, would be attending, and we will not be attending that conference. So we are moving back to our normally, um, regularly scheduled meeting rotation of every third Tuesday. So that, that's the reason why.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes. And I need to beg some forgiveness. I forgot a very important part. Uh, it's more reading, uh, but we have several proclamations from this month, and this goes all the way back to the beginning of the consent agenda that I just happened to overlook. So my apologies. Mrs. Jordan, I don't think I need to do anything special to backtrack on the agenda, do I?
No, you're, uh, no, um, Madam Chair, because it's already been approved.
Already been approved.
But you can move forward with reading.
So I can go anywhere I want on the, excellent, good to know. Okay. Uh, I will refrain from hopefully doing that in the future, uh, but if, here we go, um, as we are today. So I have asked Dr. Uh, Mr. Atkins, actually, to read the proclamation for V S B A's Bullying Prevention Month. Mr. Atkins.
Virginia School Boards Association Bullying Prevention Month, October twenty twenty four. Whereas, school bullying is an issue which requires continued focus on prevention efforts, and whereas bullying can take many forms and can happen in many places, on and off school grounds, and whereas it is important for parents, students, teachers, and school administrators to be aware of bullying and to encourage, uh, discussion of the problem as a school community, and whereas Frederick County Public Schools has a charter, uh, education program which promotes the core character traits of respect, integrity, citizenship, honesty, empathy, caring, and responsibility. And whereas Frederick County Public Schools adopted a human rights policy in nineteen ninety-three which recognized the importance of each student being able to come to school and enjoy freedom from intimidation or discrimination by threat of force, violence, or harassment. And whereas Frederick County Public Schools has an established bullying prevention program which encourages students to discuss bullying and report any incidences of bullying to adults, and whereas students and members of the community are becoming more engaged in activities to combat and raise awareness about the issue of bullying. Now therefore be proclaimed that the Frederick County School Board hereby declares October twenty twenty four as Virginia School Board Association's Bullying Prevention Month, which the intent, the intention that the issue of bullying and its prevention continue to be discussed in Frederick County Public Schools and our community dated this twenty fourth day of September twenty twenty four.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Uh, next up, we have a proclamation for National School Lunch Week, which is October fourteenth through the eighteenth. And Dr. Erskine.
Uh, whereas the National School Lunch Program has served our nation admirably for over seventy years through advanced practices and nutrition education, and whereas the National School Lunch Program is dedicated to the health and well-being of our nation's children, and whereas the National School Lunch Program has been joined through the years by many other excellent child feeding programs, and there is evidence of continued need for nutrition, education, and awareness of the value of the school nutrition programs. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Frederick County School Board hereby declares the week of October the fourteenth through the eighteenth of twenty twenty four as National School Lunch Week, and encourages all residents to become aware of and concerned about their childs and, or pardon me, their children's and their own nutrition habits, in hope, in hope of achieving a healthier citizenry today and in the future, dated this the twenty fourth day of September twenty twenty four.
Thank you, Dr. Erskine. And, Mr. Atkins, back to you for National School Bus Safety Week, October twenty first through the twenty fifth.
National School Bus Safety Week, October twenty first, or twenty first through twenty fifth to two thousand twenty four. Whereas National School Bus Safety Week is an active, continuing public education program designed to promote school bus safety, and whereas the safety of school aged children is important to parents, family members, teachers, school staff, and citizens, and whereas it is estimated that each week, uh, three hundred fifty thousand cars nationwide ignore the flashing red lights on, uh, school buses and pass the bus during loading and unloading procedures, and whereas motorists can assist in keeping students safe by complying with traffic signals, observing traffic patterns, and by stopping when school buses are loading and unloading students, and whereas National School Bus Safety Week recognizes the hard work and dedication of school transportation, uh, personnel, especially the many school bus drivers who ensure the safety, or the safe journey to and from school for students each day, and whereas the Frederick County Public Schools Transportation Department strives to provide safe, reliable transportation to students and completes in excess of seven hundred and fifty runs covering roughly twelve thousand miles per day and more than two point four million miles each year. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Frederick County School Board hereby recognizes the week of October twenty first to the twenty fifth, two thousand twenty four as National School Bus Safety Week, and encourages all residents to become aware and concerned about the safety of children as they are being transported and to and from school, dated this twenty fourth day of September, two thousand twenty four.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Atkins. Uh, additionally, we have a amendment to the July seventeenth, twenty twenty four school board meeting minutes. How would the board like to proceed?
Well, Madam Chair, you guys already voted on those consenting items.
We did, that's correct.
Yeah, it was just a proclamation, so we're done with those.
You're right, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, with that, uh, that concludes, uh, the majority of our meeting, and that leaves for board member comments.
All right, um, thank you to the, uh, citizens who came up and spoke today. Um, I know that there's a list of things that I'm going to be personally looking at. Um, one, the edited videos, I think, uh, Dr. Erskine kind of covered the reason why. I don't necessarily agree, but we did get this, this strike. Um, I would, you know, like to see where that came from on YouTube, um, and how that was handled. Um, but, um, that's the reason that we were given. Um, with, uh, respect to the, uh, I believe it was the July board meeting, uh, fluff, I'm gonna have to take a look at that, because we've cut out so much in that, um, a- as far as trying to get the dollar down. Um, I would invite anybody who hasn't seen the R F, uh, P. process, um, or R F I. process, um-
R F P.
R F P. process to, um, uh, go back and take a look at yesterday's meeting and how, it all kind of moves through, uh, before it goes to the board supervisors. Uh, with that being said, we can't ask for a soup to nuts drawing, an architectural drawing of what the new board would, or the new school would look like. Uh, we can't, and until that gets approved by downtown, we can't go out and put money toward an architectural drawing where we'll know what our material costs and our labor costs would be. Uh, we get a rough estimate based upon, uh, trends, uh, that go on with new construction of schools, and that's kind of how we're getting our, our scope and, uh, asking for the dollar amount that we want. Um, trust me, we are going to comb through this with the help of the public. Uh, we invite, you know, public input. Uh, we've also talked to the board supervisors on trying to get this, this nailed down for a proper facility for the students to learn in. I don't think anybody in the community disagrees that there is an overcrowding issue. It's how we're gonna handle it and how we're gonna fund it. Um, so with that being said, um, I have no more comments, and I appreciate everyone's time.
Mr. Bell?
Did you lose him again?
Madam Chair, may I? I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Um, first, uh, congratulations to all of the students and the teacher, um, for their fine work. I'm sorry I wasn't there in person. That's one of my favorite parts of being on the board is to see all the wonderful things that our staff and students are doing. Um, I think we have one of the best school districts in Virginia, and that's, uh, certainly seen through the, uh, activities and accolades that our students and staff receive. Um, thank you to Dr. Hummer and his staff for putting together, again, um, another great agenda along with, uh, the board members and for his team in getting all of these wonderful things accomplished, or at least in the process of getting accomplished. Um, a couple of things, though, I just want to point out. Well, first, um, thank you, uh, Madam Chair for stepping in for Scott Sturdivan. Um, I have received an email from him, and he's in good spirits, though I'm glad to say that, uh, so far so good. Um, thank you for reading the, uh, report for me, Madam Chair. I really appreciate it. And then as far as, uh, that policy on public speaking, I really hope that anyone who has an issue with anything to do with our schools, our staff, our students, us, will feel free to reach out to us by email, by telephone, and let us know if there's something that we can do to help alleviate concerns or address issues that they're facing. Uh, bringing it to the board in public forum is certainly an option, but again, I would ask that we speak to the issues the same that you would speak to your own parents or your own children, in that you're respectful, you have, uh, you choose your words wisely, and you refrain from calling people names or using profanity. Now, if you want to talk to me on the side, and as I said, call me names or what have you, I'm fine with it. I'll, I'll talk with you regardless. But to say something about someone who isn't there or- But to say something about someone who isn't there, or to wear clothing that indicates, uh, name-calling against someone who isn't there, or even if they are there, is a little bit ridiculous. All of that being said, um, I really appreciate, appreciate the comments from my board members, from Frank Punas, from Linda Martin, from Diana Klein, from Brian Erskine, and from Miles Atkins. Um, I don't think I forgot anybody. So, with all of that said, thank you very much for including me in the meeting, and I hope that we're able to continue the good business that we're doing. And Caitlin Jordan, I know you miss me.
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Bell. Anyone else?
One more thing.
Sure.
Um, just, uh, wanted to go ahead and, I know the board all kind of feels the same way, and, and staff, um, our thoughts and prayers are with our, um, our missing board members, our board members, we wish you safe travels, um, uh, Mr. Bell, uh, but our thoughts and prayers tonight are, uh, with, uh, Mr. Sturdeman, and, uh, hoping he feels better.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins.
Thank you, Miles.
Well, I guess that leaves me to wrap it up, and I know it's a late night, so I will try to make this brief. Really appreciate all the comments, really appreciate all the feedback, have received a lot of feedback regarding one nineteen P, and my verdict is still out on one nineteen P. Also pertaining to one nineteen P, I am one of the ones that has been threatened with blackmail sitting on this board. I will not succumb to any bullying, I will make the best decision for the constituents, for the students. And I would absolutely not expect any one of our students to succumb to the bullying and the threats that I have received, so I will not do the same. We vote on this October twenty-third. I have received very few emails, I've received very, a lot of shoulder taps and a lot of comments, but I want your feedback. But I will make the best decision for the constituents and for the students of this county regardless of the threats.
You're here.
That is all I have. Anyone else? That concludes our business, how would this board like to proceed?
Madam Chair?
Hold on, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, announcements.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Announcements? Almost. We do have an announcement, and I alluded to it in my board member comments, our next meeting is October twenty-third, right here in the school board office at seven P M. Now that concludes our business.
I think it's the twenty-
Is it twenty-second?
Yes, Madam Chair, sorry.
The twenty-second. October twenty-second, seven P M. And that concludes our business. How would the board like to proceed?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Atkins?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn, it has been properly seconded, any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.